Good evening. Today is Tuesday, October fourteenth, and we are at the Marlborough Public School Committee meeting. The time is seven thirty, and I call this meeting to order. If you can have everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I would like to remind everyone that we are being live taped and streamed by WMCT TV. And to my right, we have a new face, so I would like to welcome Krista Maio as the new school committee member that we did a joint convention last Monday with city council. So, welcome to your first meeting.
Thanks.
We're happy to have you. Alrighty, moving on, we'll do the presentations. So, the Marlborough High School Student Advisory Committee.
Hello, I'm Alta. I'm the senior class representative this year. And what I wanted to talk about today was better AP advertisement. I think this school does a really good job at giving us an opportunity to have AP classes that most schools do not give us. And I think that more students should be taking advantage of that at their school. When I asked the advisor, which is the person that takes care of most AP stuff, I asked her how many students are taking more AP classes this year? And she said that there was one hundred and thirty-nine students, filling up two hundred and twenty-eight AP courses seats this year. And most of those students are basically the same students taking multiple AP classes. And I think more students can take those AP classes because they're usually scared of taking AP classes because it's either it's too hard or they just lack confidence in just taking that leap and taking the challenge. And I think that one way we can make them feel more confident, empower them to take those leaps and taking the challenge of taking an AP class is by maybe like give us the opinion from AP students. And one, I was inspired by Dr. Murphy, an honors chemistry teacher at her school. And last year, she did an AP STEM ambassador program. And what she did is any students that is taking AP science class was an ambassador. And basically, they were talking about their experiences in the AP STEM class. And they were like, this is how it runs, this is the work, this is what we do on a normal day. And we just talked to them about our experience in the class. And if we have an info session as well, give them the different infos about the classes. And then we go into groups, ask them if they have any questions, tell them anything that they need to know about it. And this year, I can just visually see in the hallway, in the different AP classes, AP science classes, I can see that there are more students taking those classes. And there are students that have never taken an AP class and that is taking an AP STEM class. You would never think they would, but they did. And I can see the students also, I remember seeing the students in those info sessions that asking questions about, should I be taking those AP classes or not? And they did really did take the classes this year. And they did feel more courageous, I guess you could say, to take those AP classes. And I think what we could do this year is basically the same idea, but just make it bigger. Instead of doing it for only STEM classes, we can do it for all AP classes. And one way we could do that is basically we have a little theater, which is in an auditorium at our school. And there, we could just do the info session and then go into groups in the little theater and as well in the gym. And then we can ask them if they have any questions about the different AP classes and then ask them questions, we can tell them about anything that they might need to know. Personally, I take three AP classes, but before I took them, I was skeptical because I did not have a lot of information about those AP classes. I did not know if I should take them or not, the expectations, but I still took that leap. But there are students that just need some type of guide and some type of confidence to take on just challenges. And I think that we, like their peers, would really help them have more courage in taking those classes. And yeah, thank you guys for listening to me. Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
Not really a question, but I think it's a great idea. I know in the past, we've talked a lot about challenging the students that everybody should take at least one AP class during the time that they're at Marlborough High just to, you know, give them that kind of college-ish experience.
Yeah, I definitely think a lot of students can take it and they have the capability to do so.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like your experiment worked last year.
Yes.
Hopefully, we can wear up. You're good.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Who is Atul impersonating?
Hello, everyone. My name is Atul Madore, and I'm presenting for Maggie Morrisey, who is the junior representative. Good evening, school committee. My name is Maggie Morrisey, and I'm your new junior SAC representative. I'm so sad I could not be here in person tonight, but I'm excited to meet everyone in December. Tonight, I will present on the topic of the effects of transportation cuts on the students of Marlborough High School. Over the last few weeks, I've been speaking to my peers who ride the buses and one who is reclassified as a walker this year about the new issues they have been facing. Bus one and bus twenty run the longest routes and pick up students from multiple large apartment complexes. I spoke to one of my peers who rides bus one, and she said that her bus is late almost every day. And multiple mornings, it has been an hour late, and multiple mornings, it has not even shown up. She does not have other transportation to school, so she was not able to come to school on those days. Her bus never showed up. Her bus dropping her off late at school every day has also caused her to struggle immensely in her AP-period classes because she always misses instruction in class time for her assignments. I have heard so many stories just like hers, bussing delays that are taking away numerous students' classroom time and impeding on academic success. I spoke to another peer who rides bus twenty, and she said that there are not enough seats on her bus to fit everyone. So that most days, people have to squeeze into one seat, which is definitely not safe. Another new issue is that they have been presented to me is that some buses do not have a consistent bus driver, with one peer sharing that her bus has a new driver every day, which leads to delays and confusion. Alongside the issues that have been happening with the buses, the expanding walking zones have created new problems as well. I spoke to one of my peers who rode the bus last year, but it was lost due to cuts and now it has a forty-minute walk to school. She says that the transition of her schedule from riding the bus to a hilly two-mile walk every morning has been very difficult. And as this year goes on, she's starting to lose motivation to walk to school every day. And without the push to go to school from a family member, she started to skip school on some days. Her story is one of many from Marlborough High. For many students who don't have the motivation or family pressure to attend school, this will lead many students to become chronically absent and start struggling academically. Additionally, as we hear the transition to winter, the walk will become much more difficult. In the peak of winter, we will have several days below freezing temperatures and large amounts of snow and ice on the sidewalks. I also know that many of the sidewalks in Marlborough stay unshovelled during the winter because they're technically private property and are up to the owners to shovel. Walking a long distance through snow and low temperatures is unsafe for students, especially for those who don't have adequate jacket and footwear. Finally, those issues led me directly to hashtag choose MHS. I know that one of the district's main goals this year is to get eighth graders to go to Marlborough High instead of choosing Asbit or AMSA. I believe that the transition cuts are having and will continue to have a negative impact on the outcome of choose MHS. Marlborough High has large areas where no bussings available and operating problems still continue to exist. On the contrary, both Asbit and AMSA guarantee transportation for Marlborough students who want some. For many eighth-grade families, Marlborough, transportation is a main factor for where they will go to high school. So, the students guaranteed with bussing might have a higher chance to go to other schools. I won't pretend to understand the complexities of your negotiations with NRT last spring, and I definitely might not understand the costs that have grown immensely in recent times going into this cut. But the effects that this cut has made on MHS are detrimental. Thank you so much for your time, and please email me any questions. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Atul.
Maggie told me that she would be actively watching, so if you guys have any comments or anything you want to share, I think she's actually watching on the livestream. Jade is actively playing volleyball right now. So, I am your stand-in Jade. For those of you who don't know, I am Mary Ellen Klein. I am the student council advisor, and I advise these guys as an extension of that. So, I will stand in for Jade today, so Atul doesn't have to do all the talking. Good evening, school committee. It's great to see you all again. My name is Jade Anyango, and I am the sophomore SAC representative. Tonight, I would like to talk to you about a concern that many students and families at MHS have brought up, the current structure of our CP and honors classes, and specifically the fact that these two course levels are being taught together in the same classrooms. At Marlborough High, CP and honors students are currently combined into one setting. The only difference between the two is homework and slightly different tests. The system is not the normal for other high schools and doesn't benefit either level of students. The combined classes do a disservice to both sides, being too challenging for the lower-level students and not challenging enough for the honors-level students. The separation of classes allows for each group to receive instruction that's better suited to their learning pace. A classroom that combines CP and honors classes forces teachers to teach in a way that tries to meet in the middle, which ultimately leaves both groups unfulfilled. One of the cons of having combined classes is that the transition into taking all honors classes could not be bigger. Many students said that they have struggled with the jump from the combined class to an all honors class. Honors students have been struggling with workload and classwork, struggling to adapt to what honors class is supposed to be like. This is a huge factor to why other schools are being chosen over Marlborough High. Many families begin to look elsewhere because they believe MHS isn't academically challenging enough. I believe that the separation in the two course levels will be extremely beneficial to students and also the school as a whole. I believe the students will be able to thrive in a setting like this. If you're in a CP class and think that you're ready for the next level, you could be moved to honors. And upon that switch, there would be a significant change in the classroom and lessons and not just a packet. Students would find themselves being challenged. Additionally, the structure is helpful to teachers as well. They can formulate lessons that are curated for either honors or CP, not having to worry about making sure that it stays in the middle of the two. Ultimately, the separation of the two courses will be both effective and beneficial to both students, teachers, and possibly even the reputation of Marlborough High. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you for your time, and if there aren't any questions, have a great rest of your night.
Thank you. Bestmas enec.
Thank you. Is there a way for us to get an understanding of how many current classes are held as CP and honors combined so that we can have a better understanding of how many kids this is affecting? And I'm not expecting that the second. I'm just asking that I think that would be helpful for us to really have a better understanding.
Certainly, that figure exists, I just don't have it on.
No, I didn't think you were gonna whip it on out there. But I think that would be really helpful for us to understand.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Nyaves, and I am the freshman representative for SAC. And my presentation is on choose MHS. So, a quick agenda of what will be spoken about is the experiences that we offer, the spirit within our school and our communities, and why other students decided to choose MHS. So, here at MHS, we offer sports programs, a diversity of clubs, musical showcases and programs, college career opportunities, job opportunities, and academic resources. So, for sports, we offer a variety of sports and athletics varying throughout the school year seasonally. So for sports, we offer a variety of sports and athletics varying throughout the school year seasonally. And for clubs, we have a diverse range of clubs to choose from based on your interests to meet throughout the week. These clubs can be added to future applications and leadership roles are often um, sorry, elected by your peers. Within the musical program, we also offer string instruments, wind instruments, and chorus. Some additional programs include chamber ensemble, marche band, and a cappella. Our spring through winter musical performances occur every other season due to preparation, but smaller performances ran by the drama club. Each role is important to get show running and each raise funds for our school or promoted charities. At Marlboro High School for upperclassmen, we offer AP classes. Credit from these classes allows students to earn college credit, skip introductory courses, and graduate early, saving time and money. And at Marlboro High School, we offer work permits that come with job recommendations that can be sent in by teachers and other Marlboro High School staff. These can be found in each grade's guidance counselor's offices and inside of the main office. And here at MHS, we offer a service called Academic Intervention. This is put into some students' schedules, so it's easily accessible and is available to every student if required by test scores or requested for additional help. Regret, uh, requests can also be made for teachers during lunch or post-school hours for assistance in any subjects. And the Panther community, we share a support and try through fundraisers, spirit weeks, pep rallies, and food drives. So Marlboro High School uses fundraisers to help the communities of Marlboro. Some examples of fundraisers are bake sales, spirit day sales. The funds would go to clubs and charities, penny wars and etc., etc. And at Marlboro High School, the students take spirit weeks very seriously. This is shown in competitions throughout the week for best dressed, where you submit photos to be nominated, if you what grade participated the most. Bus pep rallies happen, happen at the end of each spirit week. Each grade receives their color, beginning color words, and the rally representatives competing games to win for their grade. It brings our school together and increases student morale. And for the canned food drives to increase, to increase our points for grade participation, students can donate canned goods. This supports those who are, who are less fortunate and increases our school spirit in Marlboro. So why did other students choose MHS? I've spoken to some peers throughout my grade and within the school, and these are some keynotes that, like they said. And one, huh? Sorry, one student said, "I chose Marlboro High School because of the teachers and the musical opportunities. It's an exclusive community where I can express myself and feel seen." And then, "I chose MHS because it's very accessible for me and my family. My schedule can be adjusted. It is free for the opportunities that they offer." And another Marlboro High School student said, "I chose MHS because of the sports. They're available year-round, a fun stress relief and a motivation to do better in classes, so I can participate in my sport." And it just says other school because I didn't know if I was supposed to put the actual names in. So it says, this is referring to Asabat from one of my friends that do attend. Um, it says, "At Asabat, the classes are very challenging, especially if you choose to do honors or AP classes. This is supposed to be because teachers assign lots of work, giving you two weeks of schoolwork to be done in one week. Or shops aren't guaranteed and it's a huge letdown when it's revealed you don't get the one that you want." And then, choose MHS. Any questions?
Any questions from a Sophia?
I have a question. So aside from presenting this to us, is this, are you using this presentation to show to other people as well?
Uh, it can be used for that, definitely. Yeah. If chosen in the future.
Can I make a little suggestion that along with the AP classes that you talk about, the early college high school? Because that's a big thing that we have here that people outside of MHS might not know about.
Right, thank you.
But it was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Anything else? Good. Thank you, Sophia.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. I believe that concludes the presentation, correct? So we shall move on. Superintendent's report.
All right. Uh, good evening, everybody, and thank you to our students. Uh, it was great hearing the different issues and updates. Uh, took lots of notes and we'll have lots of follow-up as a result, so uh, appreciate the time, effort, and energy they put into that. So a few things on my report for this evening. We are going to start with a um presentation from the managing director from Focus Schools, uh, who has submitted an um proposal for our next strategic plan and portrait of a learner. Carrie, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, nice and clear. And so before you get started, Carrie, um, I know the school committee had the electronic version in your packets that went out, but you also have hard copies of any of its easier. Um, and Carrie's gonna go through um an overview of what Focus Schools can do for Marlboro Public Schools as it relates to developing our next strategic plan and portrait of a learner. So Carrie, kind of perfect timing coming on the heels of uh, choose MHS.
For sure, and I've been looking at the sign behind two of your schools, many members transforming education. And honestly, this is really what this work is about, transforming education for every student, every day, in every classroom, no exception. So when you're ready, I'm ready to get started. Uh, just let me know.
You're ready to go?
All right, awesome. Well, thanks for the warm introduction and I can't wait to meet all of you in person, but thank you for welcoming me in sort of this visual space tonight. Um, I'm really excited to have the chance to talk with you a little bit about our proposal. Uh, and really, at the end of this conversation, I hope to have accomplished four things. So number one, um, why this work matters from Marlboro Public Schools. Like, why do this thing called a portrait of a learner and a strategic plan? Also, number two, to teach you just a little bit about Focus Schools and the kind of partnership we will bring to you. Number three, to go through briefly our four-step process to get from this idea of portrait of a learner and strategic plan to impact and everything that happens in between. And then last but not least, our sort of promise to you, what we're going to leave you with at the end of this partnership. So those are the four sort of talking points tonight. Um, does anyone have any questions about those before I switch to the next slide?
Up a tiny bit.
All right, so let's get started with one of my favorite Focus Schools visuals. I hope you can see this um on the screen in front of you. Uh, and, and let me give you a little bit of an inside track on what this, what these visual shapes represent. So on both the visuals, one on the left and one on the right, you're going to see some sort of ovals and circles. And think about those things as your systems, your structures, your programs, your departments, et cetera. And then on both visuals, on the left and the right, you're going to see arrows. And think about the arrows as the schools and the people inside those schools, the adults, who are there to serve the graduation camps. The students that enter the classroom doors in Marlboro every day, expecting to be delivered the best education in Massachusetts and across the United States for that matter. So what you notice on the visual on the left are the systems and the structures and the programs and the curriculum, those oval and circle shapes. They're working really hard, but they're not exactly aligned. And so the schools, the arrows, are struggling to do what we call to do our moral imperative. Um, they're struggling to provide great education in every classroom, every day, for every student, truly no exception. And what a portrait of a learner and a strategic plan do when they work together is they guarantee that all of those systems and structures and curriculums and things will become aligned, allowing the schools to work smarter, not harder, for the students that they serve. So that's why this work is really important for Marlboro right now. You have so many great things happening. I've had the chance to meet with a couple of people in Marlboro and learn about the curriculum across grades, pre-K through grade twelve. There's great PD growing, uh, going on. There's strong leadership. There's people who drive in the parking lot to do right by kids. And by, by developing and implementing a portrait of a learner and a strategic plan, you get all of those things working in harmony and working together to ensure that we have impact for all students. So that's why this work matters. So why Focus Schools? Uh, what you see before you is two numbers. Uh, the number twenty-one, that represents the number of districts that we have worked in, in the state of Massachusetts over the course of our existence, which has been twenty-five years now. And the plus one is something that we're really, really proud of. Uh, for the last two iterations, DESI had asked folks like us to submit proposals to be what's called an approved provider. And uh, we were approved for five years and that, um, that expired, so we rewrote again. Uh, and we were approved a second time, so we are now again a proud approved provider for DESI. And one of the services that they've approved us for is strategic planning. Uh, and so we're really proud of that. We're proud of the work that we've done in urban districts across the state of Massachusetts, rural districts across the state of Massachusetts. And of all, and all of our partnerships, our job is to work ourselves out of a job day one by building capacity in the people that we get to serve. But we work way beyond Massachusetts, but we know Massachusetts is really important to you. Uh, so we wanted to share a little bit about where we've worked, um, and, and sort of what we do. And another point that I always like to add or to share is that every single member of our team, with the exception of our uh, chief financial officer and my admin assistant, every single one of us have been educators. We've done this work and we turn our schools and our districts around by building systems and structures that get results for the kids we get to serve. So that's a little bit about um Focus Schools. I just want to pause for a moment to see if you have any clarifying questions before I go on to the next slide. Like, can you tell me more? Can you name some of the twenty-one places where you've worked, anything at all, and I'll try to answer it?
We're good.
All right, I'm gonna keep going. So our promise to you, uh, when we start this partnership, we don't come in and throw everything out and erase the dry erase board, excuse me, and start from scratch. But rather, we build on what's already working. Because people are working, as I mentioned, really hard. We just want to help you all work smarter and align everything towards this North Star, which we like to call a portrait of a learner. What we want for every single student who crosses our graduation stage in Marlboro, that's our North Star. So we're gonna build on everything that's already working. Your commitment to engaging and involving all stakeholders, remembering that every voice matters and counts. Uh, we want to continue to build on your infrastructure and your systems so that this work lives beyond our partnership with you, lived on for many years, because it becomes the way you do business in Marlboro. And then we also promise that by June of twenty-twenty-six, we will deliver two final products to you that have been developed in collaboration with you. And those two products are a portrait of a learner and a strategic plan, which then can be fully implemented beginning on July first of twenty-twenty-six. So that's our promise to you, uh, if you choose, and, and we hope that you do, to engage in a partnership with us because um, we are really looking forward to partnering with you to do, to do this really important work. So here's where the fun stuff is. And you can read in detail tonight after the school committee meeting on pages nine through twelve of that big staple document that you have in front of you. Uh, you can read some of the details behind our process of getting to this conversation to two key driving documents, your North Star, portrait of a learner, and the strategic plan. The ways in which we, as the adults, are going to lift up the portrait of a learner and make sure that it's happening in every classroom, every day, in every school, no exceptions, and that the adults are equipped and empowered with the tools they need to make sure that happens. So we're gonna go through this process, knowing that you can see some more details on pages nine through twelve again, but let's start with step one. So step one is really sort of this information gathering stage. Um, in this stage or this part of the process, you will see us looking at all kinds of data, attendance data, survey data, uh, impact data, interim assessments, formative assessments, listening sessions, uh, survey data, et cetera, et cetera, so that we can get a clear picture of a couple of things. What's working well in Marlboro Public Schools and what's not yet working. Uh, so that we can use that data to build both portrait of a learner and the strategic plan. Number two, we are going to start, as I mentioned just a second ago, really talking to and with people because we believe everyone's voice matters and counts. That means talking to community people. That means meeting one-on-one with each and every one of you school committee members. That means hosting listening sessions for families and for students. That means admitting during surveys and using the data from the surveys to sort of look for patterns and trends. And that means developing what we call a steering committee that's comprised of a representative group of people who will sit around the table with us and serve as sort of the leaders of this process where um, they're working alongside of us to look at all of this data, um, to decide our next steps, figure out how we continue to engage stakeholders, et cetera, which will then lead us to step two. But before I get to step two, I want to pause here to see if there are any clarifying questions about what this like getting ready, uh, part of the work looks like.
We're all set to continue?
It's moved on the ground. I have two colleagues who will be um, in the space with me. Um, will all be sort of meeting and working and talking and chatting with people as well as sort of digging into data. So you'll see us, um, you know, present and ask if you've enjoyed this for some conversations as well, which will lead us to the second part of our process. And that's really developing our vision of our learner, or our portrait of a learner. Uh, and, and making sure our mission, what we stand for, and our values, what we believe in, and our priorities, all start to line up with that portrait of a learner vision. And the complementary competencies, the things we want our students to know and be able to do to achieve that vision are solidly in place. So at the end of this phase, uh, what you can expect is, um, the steering committee is hard at work. All of the data has been analyzed and we have a sloppy copy draft version of a portrait of a learner that we're ready to share out for you there. And that portrait of a learner, obviously, we think about a portrait of a learner as what we want for our graduates, but we create a portrait of a learner so that the competencies roll back all the way to pre-K because the pre-K classroom is equally as important to this process and getting kids to graduate when they need, uh, to fulfill whatever their life aspirations are as the grade twelve teacher. So that's the rule of our sleeves, really working, sitting around the table, looking at data, making decisions, and coming up with that North Star, what we want for all of our graduates. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions about that important thing.
Nope, we're good.
All right, so we're halfway through the process, moving into part three, which is something that's really, really important to me. Uh, as somebody who's been in education for a very long time, this is where I'm sort of the rubber meets the road. And if people don't commit to this, the portrait of a learner is nothing more than a beautiful poster hanging on our wall. So this is when we say, okay, if this is our final portrait of a learner, what does that mean for the adults in the building and the adults in the community who are wrapping your arms around this work? How do we take the portrait of a learner and develop our own SMARTY goals? The things that we hope to achieve, the things we hope to do, the things we hope to stop doing, start doing, and make corner turns around? And then developing some really strong action steps. If these are our goals, how are we going to get there? Kind of like backwards mapping. And how are we going to know when we arrive? So that becomes the complimentary strategic plan, like how we're going to make sure we achieve this portrait of a learner. Because this is our promise to the students that were just at the microphone in the podium, as well as all of the other students across our district. So that part is the development of the strategic plan, which will then, as we said, be completed by June twenty-twenty-six. And that's when we implement. And we help you um, with implementation by giving you all the tools that you need to make sure that what we develop actually takes root and takes gold and gets momentum. So some examples and some things that we'll leave you with is a way to track progress. So we have some simple and some not-so-simple um, tools or ways that every four to six weeks, the district will pause to say what's working, what's not working, and what will we do about both? And typically, that means we make some slight adjustments to our action, what we're doing as those that serve students, so that we can keep the momentum going. as those that serve students, so that we can keep the momentum going. So we lead you at this launch phase, communication tools, how do you share this widely with the entire city? How do you use your social platforms? What are some social posts that you can make? All those kind of goodies, as well as sort of this nuts and bolts, how are we going to track our progress so that we can measure the impact of our work on the outcomes that we're getting for students? So that's page nine to 12, in just a few minutes. I know there's some more detail in there, but let me pause again and just make sure no one is feeling fuzzy about any of those steps, because I either not made sense, talked too fast, or missed something really important you want to know about. Okay, okay, well, let's keep going then. So I just, I just want to show this slide to you, because it's really important to us. Like, in the middle, in those all caps, we have a little phrase called "all means all." And we certainly believe that to be true, whether we're doing Portrait of a Learner, Strategic Planning, I L T work, data work, it doesn't matter. We believe truly, all means all. We believe every student, every day, every classroom, every voice, in every facet of the community, all of the time. We believe that circle around all means all, staff, family, community, and students need to be involved in this process from start to finish and beyond. And so we have multiple ways, as I discussed earlier, that we make sure that happens. Because this isn't a plan, a Portrait of a Learner and a plan that the district adopts. This is a Portrait of a Learner and a plan that the community adopts. And so we're super proud, especially of the work that we do involving and engaging students who just finished a Strategic Plan. And one of my favorite things to do was, I was, one of my favorite things that I did was meeting with a group of kindergartners to tell me what they hoped that they would learn in school, so that when they graduated to be whatever they wanted to be, we would have given them the tools to do so. So we meet with all kinds of students and really seek to get their input and feedback throughout this process. And then, just to remind you, you know, again, I learned the hard way that we can do really cool work. It becomes this really beautiful poster. We have T-shirts, we have banners, we have all the things, and then it's business as usual. So this slide is really, really important. This is the Strategic Plan work. How do we define success? How are we going to work smarter and harder for the students that we serve? How are we going to track our progress? Not once a year, not at the end of the Strategic Plan, but every four to six weeks to ask ourselves what's working, what's not working, and what will we do about both? How are we going to work ourselves out of a job by building capacity in everybody? The school bus drivers, the parent professionals, the superintendent, the admin team, the families, the community, the students. Our job is to build capacity in those that we get to serve so that we can ultimately work ourselves out of a job. And when we do that in any system, not we, but us, kind of defining we as all of us, the adults, we're able to sustain impact and you're able to get the growth that I know that you want for all students. And we believe that when these things are done with fidelity, 100% of your students should grow and should achieve. And we feel super excited about possibly being able to be a part of that work. So this is when, again, that rubber meets the road. If we don't get this in place, the Strategic Plan, the Portrait of a Learner, sometimes does not, does not take root. So these are our deliverables for you then, just to summarize. We promise to leave you with a unified vision of a Portrait of a Learner, because everyone will have had a voice. We promise to leave you with systems and structures that will help you sustain progress. And we promise to leave you with tools to measure the results that reflect what every community member wants for the graduates of Marlboro Public Schools. And that, colleagues, friends, school committee members, that is the end of this presentation, a very short summary of, I think, 39 pages or something inside of that packet. You have people you can call, you have examples of our work, you have more details about what I just provided an overview around. But I will pause Dr. DeFalco and open the floor if anyone has any questions, or I do want to make note before I pause, if you want to email me because something has come up, feel free to do so, question after this is over. There's a phone number there, you can reach out to Dr. DeFalco, he can get any questions to me. But if you don't mind, let's open up the floor and see if there are any questions.
Okay, Siri.
Yes, send us.
Sorry, just a question that I have around the budget, and it's like based on number of days. Is that days within district? Is that off-site? Is that the compilation? Because there were three people within the group. So I'm just trying to get a little bit more insight, because that's, sorry, I mean, 21 days.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Yes, that's a really good question. I would say, percentage-wise, so Ashley Santiago is our data geek, she's on our team, and she would be taking maybe two days to do the data analysis of all the surveys that are coming in, right? She's in, she's writing all the data reports, et cetera, et cetera. But I would say 90% of those days are boot on the ground, in-person days where we're meeting with teams, where we're, you know, onsite doing crafts, running listening sessions, et cetera, et cetera. The way we work with the budget, that's a really great question. If we don't do the days, we don't bill you. And if we go beyond the days, that's on us, we don't bill you. That is, you will get the product that, that we promised, and we never bill you until the day has been served, if that makes sense. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. I guess we're probably, I think there's probably going to need to be a little bit of a lever of tracking and, and where we are in the process, probably. Okay.
We do sort of this running tracker, and we know what we did, how many hours it was, et cetera, et cetera, so that you all have that. It's very detail-oriented. If you want us to do it another way, we can certainly do that, but we're very, I think, we're very transparent about our days.
Yeah.
And that includes everything, if we don't pay to fly, if we have to stay in a hotel, whatever, the case might be that, et cetera, et cetera. But thank you for asking that question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
It's, it's not necessarily a question for her, but I know that you used this firm in your last district. So I presume you're bringing them to us because you had a good experience.
They do excellent work. I've had the opportunity to work with focused schools in one capacity or another, back to early 2000s. So they've done a lot of work at varying levels, from coaching to instructional leadership teamwork to strategic planning work. Most recently, they did work with us on our last Strategic Plan in my prior district. They've worked in Athol Royalson, they did Shrewsbury Public Schools, they've worked in New Bedford, Worcester, lots of different, lots of different districts, with all great success. And our colleagues and counterparts have always spoken incredibly high of their work. So I did, I did a couple of follow-up check-ins, just to see recently how their work has gone in, in other communities like Watertown and Shrewsbury. And I know it's, they've had a really good, a good outcome in all their districts.
And I want the record just to state that we did have other submissions. So just because of the glowing recommendation of the superintendent, we did explore other options. So I just want to make sure that it is transparent as well for the community. So, okay, is there anything else? Nope? Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
I lost, I'm not hearing you. I see someone talking in the gray suit, but I can't hear you.
I just want to say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yes. All righty.
Please reach out with questions, but I appreciate your time, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you, you as well.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye. Bye.
So continue your report.
Great. Next is a brief October enrollment and attendance, student attendance report. As of our October enrollment submission, submission data, we are maintaining steady enrollment of just under 4,400 students. So we are at 4,389 students, but we know that that kind of can ebb and flow. And, but that's where we are currently. For our attendance, our daily overall attendance averages for our elementary schools are just about 95%, a little bit higher in most cases. Our early childhood center is just a little bit below at 94.3%. Again, that's a daily average attendance. At Whitcomb Middle, we are just under 95% for daily attendance at 94.8. And at Marlboro High School, they are at 92.8, so just under 93% overall. We're going to hear a little bit about in a few minutes, the impact of attendance on student achievement, which I think is probably pretty obvious for a lot of individuals, but we'll be sharing some data around that space. So to our families tuning in, our teachers cannot teach empty seats, we need our kids here. And so to the information from our high school students about the transportation issues, I am going to show that clip to NRT tomorrow morning. We have a meeting with them and their legal team at 8:30. Public record, so I'm going to open the meeting with that highlight, just to prove a point.
Okay.
But attendance is critically important. So I wanted to make sure that we will continue during the academic year to give updates to the school committee and to our community about our student attendance. We are also going to be including in our monthly e-newsletter, the Panther Connection, our school attendance by grade. So to our families listening in, if you happen to attend, you know, Good Now and your child's in second grade, you'll be able to see what that attendance looks like monthly. Attendance is really important. I can't stress that enough. So just an update on enrollment and attendance.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to suspend the rules.
We're going to suspend the rules for...
To move up the MCAS accountability presentation.
So there's a motion on the table to move up the Office of Teaching and Learning Report. And second, is there any questions, public service, to suspend the rules? See none, all in favor? Motion carries. So we will now move to the Office of Teaching and Learning, the 2025 MCAS and Accountability Results and Next Steps.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as you can see, the team is all here tonight and on standby as needed. The Office of Teaching and Learning and the principals are unified. I want you to make, I want to make certain that you hear and feel that tonight when we talk about the next steps that we are putting in place as a result of our 2025 MCAS data. So starting right off with the district accountability data, just quickly highlighting that the district as a whole, represented by the six tested schools, is not requiring assistance or intervention. And 52% of targets were made, which qualifies as substantial progress toward targets. We have brush, broad brush stroke goals as a district. This is just to name a few. And you will hear in more detail these goals from Superintendent DeFalco when he gives his report in just a few moments. But based on the 2025 MCAS data and the fall NWEA data, we are identifying instructional priorities for each school. And again, we have representation from each school and the support around each school present tonight. We will be utilizing the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Office of Student Services, led by Assistant Superintendent O'Brien to my left, to establish a system of support around each principal and each school. We will calibrate our system for providing feedback from informal feedback through learning walks, which we have been conducting routinely, to formal observation feedback through the evaluation system, which we have recently calibrated with a structure that all evaluators will be using. We will connect all professional development to our roadmap goals. And finally, we will empower assistant principals and educational team leaders to be instructional leaders alongside each principal, because they cannot do it by themselves. Very excited to announce that Whitcomb School is not in a status of requiring assistance or intervention. Principal House and her team worked very hard to turn the curve with instructional practices at Whitcomb School. And as you can see, they have made 65% substantial progress toward targets last year. We are not exactly where we want to be when it comes to an accountability percentile, but we are trending in the right direction, and we are confident that Whitcomb is going to progress and move forward when it comes to an overall state percentile level. So just briefly looking at their achievement data from sixth grade, and what I want you to pay attention to are the bars in red, because that's the percentage of students who are not meeting expectations. So that's what we're going to focus on for this presentation when we go through the achievement data. We want that bar to decrease. We want those students who are not meeting expectations to go into partially meeting expectations, or preferably a meeting or exceeding expectations category. So we're always looking to shrink that red bar. And as you can see, from 2024 to 2025, we went from 44% in grade six ELA to 37% not meeting expectations, which is trending in the right direction. Just a slight decrease from 24 to 25 for grade six math. Grade six was an area that we were very concerned about. That's a hard transition year, coming from fifth grade to sixth grade. And typically, what we found is that the MCAS results show that accordingly. However, this past sixth grade year has proven us wrong there. We're starting to turn the corner and make progress, starting right out the gate from grade six. So if we can continue this system of building achievement from our primary grades and then hitting those transition years from five into six and eight up to freshman year in high school, we won't have those gaps or those lags in education and achievement. We will be preparing students from a transition from primary school to middle school, or from middle school to high school, in a position where they're ready to hit the ground running. Looking at grade seven ELA, the achievement data in the not meeting expectations decreasing from 46% to 38% from 24 to 25. And in grade seven math, slight decrease from 34% to 31%. So again, trending in the right direction. Eighth grade is just a slight decrease from 37% to 24 to 35% in 25. We expect that to decrease even more dramatically with the implementation of the Into Literature Program. There was a lot of bumps in the road, if you will, to get that program running effectively and onboarded. And now that we are in a position where we have gotten through those bumps in the road, we expect to really take off with our ELA instruction at the Whitcomb School.
Okay, can I, can I just jump in very quickly?
Absolutely, yep.
So just to everyone tuning in at home, and just a reminder, two points, a two points of achievement swing is significant. So we just met Friday with the Chief Accountability and Data Officer for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Rob Curtin. And it was just a good reminder that when you see a two-point change, it's actually a significant, that's a meaningful change.
Grade eight is a bit of an anomaly. You've got low percentage of not meeting expectations already, but we did go in the wrong direction. So we'll be looking at our math instruction to make sure that we are trending in the right direction in grade eight. And then transitioning, sorry, to the focus areas for Whitcomb, around that data that you just saw, the achievement data and the moving the students from not meeting expectations to partially meeting or exceeding expectations. So Principal House did a lot of work last year with her instructional leadership team and her partnership with DESI through targeted assistance, and she established a system called the Plan Do Study Act, otherwise known as PDSA. So through that PDSA cycle, they were looking at specific instructional practices at Whitcomb School, getting a gauge for what was happening in the classrooms, developing a system of support and PD around that instructional practice, presenting that information and working with teachers during their professional learning communities, and then circling back around to make sure that what was being taught and trained during those PLC sessions was taking off and living and breathing in the classroom. So that cycle is cyclical. You establish what you want to work toward, you provide training and support around it, and then you monitor to see how it's taking place in the classrooms. So we want to continue that. We want to replicate a lot of what we learned through DESI or with DESI moving forward, even though Principal House is not getting that direct support. Provide intensive support around the new co-teaching model for Level One and Two EL beginners in ELA classes. This is crucial, and kudos to Principal House for getting this up off the ground. She was ahead of the curve when it came to establishing a schedule and a structure for this, right from the summer months, to make sure that when we hit the ground... to make sure that when we hit the ground running in September, the teachers knew where they were going, what the expectations were, and all we had to do was provide support around her. Now, the support we need to accelerate because, as you can imagine, it's a little difficult to transition into this model when you have never had beginner students in your ELA classes and EL teachers have not supported EL students in this capacity before. So we're moving quickly and we're getting this up and off the ground. But again, Principal House and her team are forward-thinking when it comes to this practice. And we think that we are confident that we will see results as positive results and outcomes from this model.
RJ?
Yes.
Can we just clarify for people listening that this is a real change in the way we practice forever?
Yes.
First and second year, students coming to this country that don't speak English were pulled out of a regular classroom into a separate classroom to learn English. And we are changing that. We are keeping them in the regular classrooms now. So that's what.
Thank you so much for making that point. At Whitcomb School, and we're looking to change our program model across the board. Whitcomb, again, is a bit ahead of the curve with that, with this co-teaching model.
I have a question on that.
Please.
Are Lynn and Michelle able to provide direct support for ELA to make sure that, you know, everyone's got exactly what they need and they're in there on a constant basis to really make sure that they're supporting?
Yep. Please do. If the green button is on, you're good.
On. So some of the support, yes, Lynn and Michelle and Office of Teaching and Learning have been in the building continually, supporting our ELA and EL teachers on this journey together. This was a decision that was made over the summer. And so teachers are walking in new to this. So we've ensured that they get an additional PLC block in their week, truly just dedicated to the EL and ELA teacher to do the co-planning piece. And we're also walking through like the six models of co-teaching, giving some education around co-teaching, what that could look like, what it might look like. And then also in the rooms, giving direct feedback on the model happening in the moment. And so recognizing we have to be flexible. Yes, it's the first time we're doing it. But if we don't hold the bar high for all students and give them access to grade level content, putting a ceiling on their learning, and that's not fair. So it's why we made the shift. We hope that, you know, it's, there's going to be bumps in the road, but we are putting all of our support, Jen Ryan, who can be here tonight, has been a big movement piece behind it, just making sure that we hear the teachers, we see it happening in the rooms, and we can pivot as quickly as we need to, to give them support.
Great, thank you.
So just taking this one to the fishing, finish line in addition to what you've heard so far. Starting October 25th, Principal House and her team are going to be offering attendance academies funded through the Targeted Assistance Grant. So we're fortunate to have that grant funding. Students will be coming in on Saturdays and receiving sessions that focus on re-engagement in school as well as academic remediation. We will be introducing a math tutoring program. And we do have Heather Russo tonight, too. And Heather Rizley, one of Principal House's teachers, has been instrumental in getting that up off the ground.
Yep, we received a grant from Metro West Community Foundation. I partnered with them, thanks to Carol Cohen, actually, who connected us last year. And they were very willing to hop on board, was able to collaborate with Milford Public Schools and their middle school at Stacy to see it up and running there. So we're going to be servicing 20 students in the sixth grade for all year. Those 20 students' parents have been extremely thankful. They're going to be meeting after school two times a week. And then we have some celebrations planned for them throughout the year. But the important part is it's directly connected to the HMH INTO curriculum that we use in math classes every day. So it's, it's not teaching remedial math to students. It's giving them like just-in-time support for the math we're teaching during the daytime. So it's offering an extended school day to those students who need it.
Can I ask, math-wise, is that going to also be something concentrated on that group? Like grade seven where the, the math dipped on the, the higher end? So are we going to be able to target some of those? That kind of seems like it slipped a little bit.
Yep, it definitely did. And it's an area that we're kind of shifting some support to within the building. And we are going to be looking at like leveraging this program so that we're piloting it in sixth grade. What it's doing right now is it's taking work partnership students in college, and it's partnering them, so it's high-impact tutoring virtually. So we provide Saga education with the curriculum that we use. They work with the students who are currently in college, which is a great connection for our students. And they meet with them virtually in the room with our teachers, like monitoring it. So although we, we're working with Saga to like increase the amount of college students wanting to engage in the program, it's a work-study for them. We recognize that we could kind of shift our own model to meet those needs. And Dr. DeFalco and I have talked about funding for that to make it happen, so.
And that will be a common theme that you'll hear throughout the presentation, Mrs. Hennessy, is that shifting of support based on the need that's been identified for a content area and a grade level. To wrap this one up, the high-quality instructional materials as part of special education group work is something that Assistant Superintendent O'Brien and I have been talking about to make sure that special education services are utilizing the high-quality instructional materials, that it's not just happening in the general education setting through inclusion services. She'll speak about that a little bit later on tonight. So thank you, Principal House. Moving on to the high school. As you see here, highlighted is the high school is not requiring assistance or intervention. We are, however, a bit concerned about the data from 2025 because you, as you can see, the annual criterion reference target percentage went from 79% to 27%, from 24 to 25. So that's something that Principal Serapina and I have been talking about, making sure that we don't let that dip identify in us as a high school. And we turn things around to make sure that we are headed in the right, right direction so that accountability percentile doesn't go below 27. And in fact, we move it up, yes.
And if I could just add a couple pieces to that. We'll talk in a few moments about our accountability results. These are the achievement results, right? And then there's a whole accountability structure that DESI has put in place for this. So the interesting thing that you'll see toward the end of this is the accountability ranking for the high school actually went up. Although RJ is talking a little bit about the decrease in actual, the number of points we attained. One of the things we discussed with the Chief of Accountability and Data for the state was that overall, the 10th grade results across the board went down quite significantly so. And, you know, while there's a lot of conversation about some of the why behind that, we're not really that interested in kind of state talking points. We really want to get into the local data and address the issues here. But we do know there was a really large vote, you know, that took place last year that took a little bit of the pressure off the assessment itself. But we are still using the results to help double down on what our kids need for, for math literacy and science. So with that, you'll see the high school actually achieved quite a few points for things like chronic absenteeism, although their numbers are still high, for moving their EL students, for students taking advanced coursework. So the high school has a variety of data points. Our drop rate is down to 1.4, it's the lowest it's been. So MHS, choose MHS, they're doing some incredible work overall. We've got work to do as far as achievement. But if you're, if you're remembering this piece when we look at the accountability slide, it might feel kind of like a conundrum, like how did that happen? So I just wanted to explain that a bit.
With regard to the achievement, you can see, looking at that not-meeting category from 24 to 25 in grade 10 ELA, we did increase.
Each of these side graphs?
It's last year's grade level.
It's not the same kid.
Correct.
It's different. So my question is, how, what do we, and care? One group falls for another, falls from another, what are we doing about the group that fell, that's gone past? That's the one I'm worried about, concerned about.
Getting our numbers up is great.
Yep.
But I want to make sure that the kids that we've passed on that have the problem have also been helped. What are we doing to make sure that happens? That's my bigger concern. MCAS has always worried to me more about a pile of students' names that has about any one kid in that pile. We don't, I know we care about the kids. I know well, we care about the kids. But MCAS has always seemed to care about that pile and not about any kid in that pile. That's what worries me. That's why I want to make sure the public knows. We look at this, it's not the same group of kids that's getting worse or better. It's different groups of kids. And different groups of kids have different needs. They have different abilities, they have different everything. So we have to keep that in mind when we look at these results as well.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. So there is certainly a variable there. One way that we are using that data from a cohort that is transitioning from a grade level with this data. So grade four, as you'll see with one of our schools coming up, there was a low achievement level that stood out to us. So we have, and I'll mention this as we move through the slides, targeted a lot of supports with the grade five students. It might not be all of the same students, but it's going to be the majority of the same students in grade five.
Can I just add to that? I love that question because there's actually two ways we, that we have been looking at this. So we do look at the year-over-year results for a specific grade because it helps us identify either instructional challenges that we might have in any particular grade span or curricular gaps that we might have. So when you look at, you know, for instance, the high school ELA achievement and you look at 22 to 23 to 24, you actually can identify some patterns and trends that emerge that could either be instructional or curricular. However, when you look at the cohort, to your point, that's really powerful data because those kids are real-time, right in front of us. And we can adjust what we're doing and the principals do based on those results. This data, and I just want to state this, is an autopsy. This is like dead data. This was last spring, but it's important. We use this and marry it to our beginning-of-year NWEA data to really help identify what those responses to intervention or those like tutoring groups are going to look like to get to the crux of exactly what you're asking. So this data point married with our beginning-of-year data point is really important for us as it relates to intervening on, on the behalf of kids. So thank you for that question.
So moving on to grade 10 math, as you can see, from 24 to 25, given what Mr. Cruz has said, the different cohort of students, but overall, the achievement data from grade 10 did increase from 16% not meeting expectations to 22. So based on that data and based on the NWEA fall screener data, Principal Serapina and his instructional leadership team have started to identify areas to focus on for MHS. So starting right with empowering lead teachers, that's a new framework. We have a lot of departments that are not represented directly through the Office of Teaching and Learning with a content supervisor. So we, again, are empowering the ETLs or the assistant principals or the lead teachers in this case to be able to provide support to departments when it comes to PLC meetings or department meetings or day-to-day support with instructional practices. Shift passive learning to active learning in all classrooms. I talked about this at the last school committee meeting. We're trying to limit the amount of screen time and increase the amount of active engagement when it comes to instruction in the high school classrooms. Establishing a co-teaching model for ELA and EL teachers for Level Three and Four students. Currently, we have two sections offered. This was something that we were afforded the opportunity to do by some shifting of staff based on low enrollment numbers. And Lynn Medallion, Michelle Blair, and Principal Serapina took some pretty swift action to make sure that we repurposed the EL teachers and started to get this co-teaching model up off the ground. So currently, two sections offered in grade, one in grade nine and one in grade 11. Conduct routine learning walks and provide immediate feedback to all teachers on how their planning and practice applies to the MPS expectations for instruction. And again, that's a common theme you'll hear with instructional rounds or learning walks to make sure that we are providing informal and consistent feedback, aside from the evaluation system, to educators to hold a level of accountability and provide them a little practice before the game when it comes to the formal evaluation system, to let them know, yes, you're doing a nice job when it comes to the instructional priorities as outlined in the roadmap. And then finally, evaluate root cause and dropout of dropout and chronic absenteeism rates for subgroups and develop action plans. And that's something that Assistant Superintendent O'Brien will speak to a little bit later on. She went to a training today that talked about root cause analysis for those areas. Any questions regarding the high school as I move along here? Richard School, we have already talked about at previous school committee meetings about requiring assistance and intervention. We looked at preliminary MCAS data. And Principal Richards has already taken multiple steps to establish an instructional leadership team and a system of support around her educators at Richard School. We are concerned about the accountability percentile at being, Richard School being in the lowest 10% of schools in the Commonwealth. However, we are confident that with these instructional supports placed around educators and Principal Richards' instructional leadership team, as well as the partnership that she'll have with DESI, which was afforded to Principal House last year, we will turn the curve quickly with Richard School and get them into a higher performing status rapidly. So just looking at the achievement data here in 2024, 28% were not meeting expectations. In 2025, 35% were not meeting expectations. In grade four, or sorry, grade three math, we see that 39% in 2024 were not meeting and 36% in 25. And then, Mr. Cruz, so this is something that stood out to us. If you look at the grade four ELA achievement data with 41% in 2025 not meeting, that's caused us to immediately say, we want to do something for those grade five students that currently are enrolled at Richard School. The same for the math achievement where you have 45% that did not meet expectations in 2025. So again, utilizing the data that we have may not be the most timely, but in conjunction with NWEA data, we're getting an accurate picture of which students need accelerated remediation. That's okay. And, and where to focus. So that being said, just wrapping up with the grade five ELA achievement data, 32% and not meeting in 24 and 30% not meeting in 25. And in math, 27% not meeting in 24 and 38% not meeting in 25. That's Principal House's grade six. So she, you know, has utilized this data as well to make sure that she has interventions and accelerated support systems around the students that she has inherited from not just Richard School, but all the grade five classes at our four elementaries. Richard has really, really started to streamline their focus, utilizing high-quality instructional materials during small groups. Special education is something that we want to make sure we have at the forefront of our, of our thought, establishing a system of accelerated.
RJ, can I jump, one second? This is updated. So you'll see a couple of these slides that were updated from the packet submission on Friday.
And we needed some time to really make sure that we had. So you're going to see more bullet points here. But that's a good thing. We're working hard, we're gathering our priorities, and we're, we're clearly outlining them. So establishing a system of accelerated intervention starting in grade five, that kind of dials back to when we were asking for an intervention coordinator and a specific interventionist for the upper grades focusing in grade five so Principal Richards could do what she needed to do with that group. Work with the Richard instructional leadership team to routinely provide comprehensive supports in all grade levels. Continue to partner with TNTP to successfully roll out the INTO Math Program in all grades, which will lead to improved overall student performance in mathematics. So Heather Russo is with us tonight. She's been doing a lot of work with the consultants from TNTP. We're utilizing that same strategic advising structure that we utilized for the INTO Reading Program to help with the onboarding and the launch of INTO Math, grades K through five. It's a bit ironic because now we don't have the support in INTO Reading. So we're feeling a little bit of that tension and that stress because teachers are trying to now balance both. We have a sustainability plan, but a lot of the focus has gone on the INTO Math Program when it comes to direct consultancy. But thank you to Heather Russo and our partners at TNTP for assisting with that. Partnering with DESI, we're waiting to hear from DESI. But what we're looking to do is as soon as we're assigned, our representatives replicate some of the success that Principal House had with the PDSA cycle or maybe some of the structures and systems that we had put together in Whitcomb and how they might be applicable to Richard School. Analyze the effectiveness of current special education supports and interventions to determine factors contributing to low student outcomes and establish an actionable plan to improve achievement and growth for students on IUPs. Again, Assistant Superintendent O'Brien will speak to that a little bit later. And then finally, research, design, and implement before and after-school programs that provide intervention and enrichment opportunities to student support, to support student growth. So again, Principal Richards has been taking a lot of steps to get some systems in place, right down to after-school interventions in our core content areas and enrichment opportunities as well. And that's a key point, too. Like, we're looking to accelerate or remediate learning loss, but we're also looking to provide a push to students with enrichment opportunities as well. You okay over there? All right. Moving on here, sorry, to, unless there are any questions for Richard, I'm sorry.
Um, thank you for the update, first of all. I appreciate that because that was one of the things.
I appreciate that because that was one of the things I was wondering was like the TNTP, we've got it on some of the different schools, didn't have it here. So, that was the consistency thing. Because I think what we've always talked about is that we want to make sure even if Richer's numbers were showing maybe a little lower, let's not, you know, be unaware that our numbers needed still improvement in other places. And we've got to get everybody on the same page because they're all funneling in to Whitcomb and then eventually the high schools. So, thank you for the update. And I think that's just looking for the consistency that we can have in each school that will be hitting the same students. Thank you.
Yeah, I truly appreciate that comment because there might be some things that are specific to a school based on the data, but we will immediately replicate that if it's going to leverage a student output that would be universal across the board. So, you're going to hear about that with Jarwick School in particular as I move forward here because Principal Patel has not waited to use her data and already takes some steps to put program changes into action. We see success with that or we understand the justification. We don't say, oh, that's a Jarwick-specific thing. We work with the Office of Teaching and Learning and our leadership table to make sure that we can replicate that at our other schools as well. And I'll show you some examples of that momentarily. So, Jarwick School not.
Dr. Scazza, can we just go back to Richer? So, I guess my concern, looking at the data, like how far back do you go when you do a deep dive? Because 2022, 2023, 2024, and 2025, they're consistently decreasing. So, based upon the next grade of fifth grade, how are we taking that cohort, I guess, in finding that data for the grade five when consistently it's, I mean, grade four math consistently, grade ELA, they're consistently decreasing? So, I guess how far back do you go with the data to see what the needs are and what are we missing?
To answer your question, I think you go back for that general baseline of how, where the academic deficits lie as indicated by a standardized test, an MCAS test, right? It's a difficult test. It's not a whole representation of a student's learning, but it's.
Right, I'm not a test taker. I understand that, but I guess there are indications year after year that were decreasing. So, I mean, it's great that we're doing all the work now, but I don't want to lose sight on 22, 23, and 24 because there could be valuable information there that we're missing the mark on. Would that be a fair assessment to say?
Just to jump in, I think that's a great point. And one of the things that we are doing is the actual analysis that you're talking about. So, we are going back multiple years and we're looking at it from both, like year-over-year to see if we have issues with instruction, issues with curriculum. And then, what are we doing for those students? So, you heard a bit about like the math tutorial program that the middle school is putting in. That is to address some of those students, right, that have come up from fifth grade that had some struggling mathematics results. So, it is, it's what you're saying. It's critically important to do multiple years of analysis to really get under the surface of what the issues are. We also have to redefine the definition of kind of equity and how we approach certain things. So, one of the things that Dr. Scazza mentioned was, you know, some after-school programming that we're looking at for the Richer School. And we're looking at expanding our community partnerships to bring in some other enrichment opportunities. We may not have them at all the other elementary schools right away, but we're targeting certain schools to address exactly what the kids are saying through not just this data point, but other data points that they need. So, we're looking at a variety of data points to do that as well.
And I guess my concern is, and I don't mean this disrespecting all the work that you're doing, but now we're moving towards larger school of 950 students for an elementary school. So, like what are we missing here? Because now if we have a bigger school, I don't want to miss further things with such a large elementary school, I guess.
That is such a great question. And that is exactly what we should be talking about because right now, we have a Richer School of about 500 students in the larger building, about 950. The systems and structures piece of this work is so important. And in the new Richer project, we've really kind of built it into almost like a lower school and an upper school, primary and upper elementary, that actually has the infrastructure as far as an assistant principal, the interventionist wraparound, the adjustment counselors, so that whole child approach. And something that we're trying at the Richer School now with the intervention coordinator, there's a really important piece to that position that looks at not just the data and how we're coordinating the actual interventions for students as it relates to this group of students needs math intervention on fractions three times a week at 45 minutes, right? And here are the data points we're going to look at to see if we're closing that. But also, what are some of the instructional gaps we have in our tier one, like our regular general class, that need to be addressed as well? Whether it's through lesson planning or just informal feedback, you know, kind of peer-to-peer feedback. So, the reason I'm using that to answer your question is because we need to get this right, like right now. Because we're about to expand that student base by another 450 kids. So, those systems and structures are critically important.
It seems like almost foundationally, we've got to really do a better job of pinpointing where our foundation needs more strength, right?
100%, and it can't be a matter of we have 180 days and we get through each day. Like, we actually need to have, and Carrie talked a little bit about this, which is one of the reasons I believe in this structure, these four-to-six-week cycles where we're actually progress monitoring our kids, right? We're not just looking at a beginning-of-year NWEA, middle-of-year and end-of-year, but within those three data points, we actually have really tight progress monitoring periods that have to happen to ensure that we're narrowing the gaps for the kids who need them. But Catherine, to your point, accelerating the learning for the kids that are ready for that, too, right? It can't just be about the students who are in that red zone.
Well, because it speaks to exactly what the young woman was talking about, where it was the CP and honors being together, right? We can't let somebody get caught. They can't move forward because they can't go fast enough, and we can't hold them back either. You know, that expectation has to be held high, and we have to figure out how to help them to get there, not, oh, well. It just doesn't work.
No, you're right. And gone are the days of like, we just report out four times a year in a report card. Like, we just can't function that way anymore. It needs to be shorter, tighter data cycles. And we'll actually talk about that in the goals later, to progress monitor the outcomes as we're going.
Again, only being chair for two years, I don't remember this much information about MCAS last year. Granted, I don't like to see the numbers where they're at, but it's very refreshing at the same time that we're diving this deep to be transparent and say, hey, look, this is the issues. So, kudos to the leadership team and all the work that you're doing to all of you, you know? Again, it's tough to hear and tough to see. But again, I don't think we've had this much in-depth of like, this is our plan, this is what we're working on. So, you're doing the work. I'm excited to see the results. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear. And I appreciate the dedication to make these numbers better so we can choose Marlboro. So, thank you. But please, carry on with the other schools.
Jarwick School, as you can see, not requiring assistance or intervention as an overall classification and substantial progress toward targets with an accountability percentile of 32. Looking at the achievement data from grade three in ELA, 25% in 2025 not meeting expectations. In grade three math, we had a jump from the previous year, tested year with 33% not meeting expectations. In grade four ELA, we had a decrease. And we had immediately seen some trends in grade four with instructional practices that we wanted to highlight and replicate. So, Principal Patel was quickly looking at the practices on the grade four team at Jarwick School to see what was leading toward results as such, as well as grade four math where you can see in 2025, 17% not meeting expectations is a pretty solid number in comparison to a lot of the others that we've seen. Grade five ELA, 25% not meeting expectations in 2025. In grade five math, 32% not meeting expectations in 2025. Principal Patel also took steps to look at the student responses, the essay responses, those are available, to principals. And immediately, she noticed that there was a concern with the output, the written output on standardized testing, on the MCAS test. It's scored for conventions and idea topic development. And there was just a wide range of how students were responding and what they were not being scored on. And it wasn't necessarily because they weren't producing anything. It just wasn't, it wasn't clear enough as to what they were producing and the conventions that they were using and the mis-scored opportunities that were happening. So, we're working on really tightening up writing instruction. Throughout my years as an elementary principal and being in Marlboro, we've gone through a number of writing programs and now really staying focused on the core curriculum in terms of INTO Reading and looking at what standardized testing is asking students to do in terms of either composing an essay or responding to literature. We want to make sure we're preparing students for that. It's not just a good test-taking skill. It's also a good skill for lifelong written output when it comes to applying for a job or any written prerequisite that you might have for your career or in college, moving forward on in life. So, we want to make sure that we're focusing on written output. In addition to that, utilize high-quality instructional materials during small group special education and EL instruction, a common theme that you'll see. Reevaluate writing instruction, as I mentioned, to develop and establish a structure that enhances student output in conventions and topic idea development in all grade levels. Chris Henry as our Director of Instruction and Ed Tech and Jen Ryan have already taken a lot of steps. They're actually meeting with the principal group on Thursday this week to explain a structure and a system that they put together that all schools will utilize. So, again, not just specific to Jarwick, but kudos to Principal Patel for immediately recognizing a deficit and taking steps to rectify it. Continue a partnership with TNTP to successfully roll out the INTO Math program. Utilize the Jarwick School ILT to provide regular actionable feedback to educators using the walkthrough tool. And then finally, based on analysis of NWEA, so that's the more timely data that we have from our recent fall screener, student achievement data. And UFLY, that's the University of Florida Literacy Institute, assessments to identify next steps for an RTI plan. To speak to what Superintendent DeFalco was saying, there in lies like, now you've got the data. Now, you've got a structure through response to intervention, and you're giving students specifically what they need as a result. So, that six-week cycle of monitoring that and making sure that students are making progress is imperative to that. So, we're doing that pretty well with a structure that we have for ELA for math. That's a bit of a work in progress because we haven't traditionally had an RTI model for mathematics. But we recognize that that was something we needed to do, and we're taking steps to do so.
So, RJ, can I just ask a question?
Yep.
So, does the INTO Reading have a writing component? Or we still have a separate writing?
It has a writing component.
Okay.
Yeah, can you talk in that? Thanks.
So, there's two pieces to it. There's the response to reading in the INTO Reading program and then separately INTO Writing. What we were noticing as working with Chris Henry and Jen Ryan, that the INTO Writing and INTO Reading genres don't always match up. So, what is necessary is really that response to reading and just providing structures and formulas for students to become better writers and respond to literature more effectively.
Great. Thank you. And one other thing, just tomorrow, another day, can you send us the new focus, the updated focus areas for the different schools?
Yes, absolutely. Moving on, we have two more schools, and then we'll wrap things up. Superintendent DeFalco will assist me with some of the accountability data measures. Kane School, not requiring assistance or intervention, 47% moderate progress toward targets with an accountability percentile of 26. So, Principal Pantazopoulos and the team have been talking about some immediate focus areas for Kane. Looking at their ELA grade three achievement data, from 2024, there was a 20% students not meeting expectations to 36% in 2025. For grade math achievement data, 22% in 24, and that increased to 33% in 25. For grade four ELA, 20% not meeting expectations in 24 with a slight increase to 22%. So, we're trending in the wrong direction here. And then math, we have a slight decrease from 24 with 19% not meeting expectations to 17. And then rounding off here with ELA grade five, 19% in 24 not meeting expectations to 27% in 25. And finally, grade math achievement data, 15% not meeting in 24 to 18% in 25. So, utilizing that data in conjunction with the NWEA fall assessment data, Principal Pantazopoulos has immediately identified instructional priorities in specific grades. She has focused math instruction in grade four as one of her immediate priorities as indicated by the fall NWEA data. She's utilizing the Kane School ILT. And I should just mention that an instructional leadership team isn't something that's always necessarily existed at each school. And now, we have an instructional leadership team at each school that is supporting the principal with these focus areas. Again, a common theme of utilizing the high-quality instructional materials during small group special education and EL instruction, partnering with TNTP to roll out the INTO Math program. And then, an analysis of NWEA student achievement data and UFLY assessments to determine next steps for response to intervention. That's something that I had highlighted with the previous school.
So, who's on the ILTs?
On the ILT, help me out because I might miss a member or two. But typically, it is the assistant principal, the educational team leader. You have your lead teachers for the grade levels. You might have your reading teacher and your math interventionist. And I believe that tends to round it out. We do have content supervisor, I'm sorry, EL coordinator. Thank you, Principal Richards, EL coordinator as well. And we do have content supervisors who are dedicating some time to make sure that they are supporting the specific buildings, too.
Great, thank you.
And then finally, Good Now School, not requiring assistance or intervention, 62%, substantial progress toward targets in an accountability percentile with an accountability percentile of 28. ELA grade three achievement data, slight increase from 24 to 25 with 27% in 25 not meeting expectations. Grade three math, increase from 24 to 25 with 31% not meeting expectations. So, again, we're trending in the wrong direction there. However, grade four ELA, significant decrease from 24 to 25 in the amount of students who are not meeting expectations from 38% in 24 to 26% in 25. And 19% not meeting in 24 for grade four math and 17% in 25. So, identifying some of those instructional practices in grade four is something that Principal Collins has been working on as well, what's working and how do we replicate it. And then, grade five ELA achievement data from 24, 31% not meeting to 29% not meeting in 25. And finally, grade five math, 20% not meeting in 24, increase here of 25% not meeting in 25. So, based on that data in conjunction with NWA fall assessment data, we are looking to do a number of things. And one thing that we have seen during our ELD services and the pull-out model is that we want to reevaluate what that looks like. And Principal Collins and I have been going into ELD pull-out services, and I've started conversations with Lynn Medallion and Michelle Blair around the curriculum, how we are marrying reading development with language acquisition and making sure that we are doing due service to both. So, if we find success with that and we are identifying the priority areas of what the shift might look like with ELD services at Good Now, that would be something we would immediately replicate at all the other elementary schools. Partnering with TNTP for the INTO Math rollout. Building administrators will be working on using Observation Walkthrough Tool and calibrating Observation. and calibrating observations to provide clear, concise and meaningful feedback. We've talked about clear is kind and making sure that we're not giving fluffy feedback to our educators, providing clear recommendations and then holding ourselves and our educators accountable to those recommendations. And then finally, Principal Collins has highlighted an enhancement of family engagement by creating more opportunities for families to be actively visible and involved throughout the school day and within the broader school community. And she immediately recognized that that was something within the fabric of the Good Now culture that needed to be addressed. So kudos to her. Any questions specific to Good Now School? All right, I'm at the tail end here and thank you for bearing with me. As you had noted, this is the most comprehensive MCAS data and accountability data presentation that I've given. This is my fourth year giving this presentation. But I appreciate your comment, Mr. Mayor, in highlighting that we are trying to make sure that we're showing you we are taking steps and not just presenting the data, but presenting what we are doing with the data. And I've already started. So you see these state percentiles here. This is just a big picture. And this will be shared with you. It wasn't in the original presentation. A big picture look at where the percentile ranking was in 2024 in the right column to the left column of 2025. So the green just highlights an increase in percentile ranking. And we spoke to Richard and Kane and what we're looking to immediately accomplish to turn that corner and make sure their percentile rank improves this coming testing season. And then Superintendent DeFalco, who is well versed with the state accountability system, is going to give us a little bit of explanation and clarity around where Marlboro Public Schools earned points and some of the successes that are indicated by those, those points that we earned.
Thanks. And I'll just run through this quickly because I already touched on some of these things. But so there's, there's two, there are two pieces to, to this work. The first is obviously our achievement and growth, right? So the student performance. And then there is a set of other indicators that come into play. We are essentially, each district in the Commonwealth is awarded points for how they grew against themselves as it relates to the targets that the Department of Education set for us. So any place that you see up here where we were awarded points, it means that we either were approaching, met or exceeded the target that Desi set for us. So these just highlight a few. And as a district, we made substantial progress, which is actually very good in terms of the ranking and how Desi lays this out. You might recall way back, there used to be like levels, level one, level two, level three, right? All of that kind of went away. And the Department of Education has reset their structure a few years ago around how have districts been able to make progress towards the targets that the Department of Education has set for each district? And so you'll see a few highlights here for our chronically absent students. And as a reminder, that's 10% more of school, which is 18 plus days of school a year. In our grades three to eight, our current rate is just over 18% from last year. And so we actually were approaching the target that the Department of Education set for us. So we're not quite there yet, but making progress towards. For our English language learners, the Department of Education lays out this language acquisition model that looks at acquiring certain benchmarks each year for six years. And that's essentially kind of the, like the bookends, if you will, from year one to year six that Desi expects our students who, English is not their first language, should be able to acquire that language over time and how we've made progress towards that. So we actually did okay. We got three out of the four points that were available to us. So we made some progress there for grades three to eight. For high school, we earned all of them. So we actually received all four of our points there, which is great. For our high school student growth, we received six of the eight points. So the target S G P number is 50, right? That's like your average growth you'd expect to be in the 50th percentile. And the high school made substantial progress in that. I think we were at 53 in English and we were around the same for math. We received all four points for our drop rate. So we actually exceeded the rate that Desi set for us. So our current drop rate is at 1.4%. So a big shout out to all of the adults at the high school that are working really hard to get our students to stay in school and to get them across the finish line. We met our target for our chronic absenteeism. It is way too high still. So 30% of our students are still chronically absent. And one of the things that I want to mention here, again, I mentioned that we met with the Chief of Accountability for Desi last week, Rob Curtin. One of the things that he shared with us was a recent study that they had finished around the impact of chronic absenteeism as it relates to student achievement. And you can, your students who are chronically absent can be anywhere between a full or a half, half to a full performance level behind their peers. And so again, to our families listening, we, we need our children in school. They have to be in school. Just their sheer attendance, as you would assume, has a significant impact on their achievement. And at the high school, I know Mr. Sapina is working hard with his team to ensure that we're keeping those kids engaged and keeping them, keeping them in attendance. For our students in advanced coursework, these are our juniors and seniors that took our A P courses. 61% of our students enrolled in an advanced placement course, which is great, but again, always pushing the envelope on that. We heard this evening that we've got some more recruitment work to do there. So we're happy to hear that. And we'll take that challenge on for sure. And our current graduation rate is just under 83%. So again, overall as a district, some of the headlines, making some progress, not where we want to be. Oops, sorry.
Back to questions. One, how are the targets determined? How do they decide what your target is?
Interesting question. So the Department of Education, pre-COVID, had a different measurement, algorithm, if you will, for what was expected for achievement, for attendance. That has changed. So if you were to pull up our accountability page, you could look at the district, look at by school, you will see something called a path to recovery, a recovery path. What the Department of Education decided to do post-COVID was actually reduce the targets they were setting because schools collectively across the Commonwealth, we're not even reaching the lower targets. So they changed their algorithms and have actually scaled back what the expectations are as far as meeting those goals. So I share that only because if you look at that accountability page, you'll see language that says like recovery path. And it might read strange because that's a post-COVID thing. So it's more of an algorithm versus, it started from the, that no child left behind. And remember then there was this thing called gap having? So trying to cut your gaps in half, right? Desi's done many, many iterations of this. They have scrapped all of that and now we're all in recovery. Whatever that means, but it's a less aggressive target.
Usually with Desi, when you say things now, I have more questions than I started with. Now, when the targets, every person, every, every system has the same targets, right?
No. So that's, oh, sorry, I don't know what just happened there. But.
Desi's in the room.
I know. So no, actually, what I appreciate about this model is you, there are two different buckets of data that Desi looks at. It is how we are comparing to others in our grade span. So grades three through eight are high school and how we are comparing to ourselves, our targets. So this data that we're looking at here is how we're comparing to ourselves. So our targets are unique to Marlboro.
When they're awarding their points, what's their point system? How do they determine that?
There are two different buckets of points that are awarded. There are the aggregate, so it's all students. And then there's the lowest performing. So we each year get a list of students provided to us from the Department of Education that are kids that have been with us for two consecutive years. So they have two years worth of data. So yes, those students can count twice. As a matter of fact, they can count multiple times because they often will fall into other student groups. Low, you know, potentially low income, not always. Potentially E L, not always, right? Special ed, not always that kind of thing. So we are actually given points based on two buckets, the aggregate and then the lowest performing. And one of the things that RJ showed on this, on his slide, RJ, if you want to go back to one of the accountability slides, we'll highlight it, keep going back to like the Good Now. Go back to the beginning of the Good Now presentation. And I can show you very quickly right here. Okay, right here. So you'll see there is a 2024 and a 2025 percentages of points. So Desi basically scales 40% for 2024, 60% for 2025. And then you can see the criterion reference is actually the number of points that we got as it relates to the targets they set for us. But you'll see the accountability percentile, that's your norm reference. So that's actually how we did compare to all other grades three through eight schools. Clear as mud.
Dr. Skaz and I are going to have a conversation about anything on that page. You have a lot of questions, but I'm not going to take time to hear them. But I'm just saying, I mean, I mean, it's, it, there's no, there's no discretion. I mean, certain things mean certain points. The person doing this assigning of points can't just decide to give you less points for other reasons than what's there, right?
Correct. So if you are approaching your target but have not reached it, you can receive anywhere from one, two or up to three points. If you did not meet your target but declined, which we did in some cases, you get zero points. And that is the case for all areas from achievement to growth to attendance, to graduation, to drop rates, to your L progress. It's like a whole formula that's based upon how close you were to meeting or exceeding that target will be your zero through four points.
Reinforcing my decision not to date statistics in college. Thank you, we actually appreciate that.
Just quickly, a comment. Seems like you've got a lot of information to put right in front of N R T about how important it is that they get our kids to school.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day. Every hour that they don't get our kids to school counts.
Hundred percent.
On them.
Okay. Anything else?
I just want to quickly acknowledge the principals in the Office of Teaching and Learning for being here tonight and afford them the opportunity to excuse themselves after this presentation if they choose to do so. They have schools to run tomorrow and a lot of hard work to do. So if you would like to leave after this presentation, please do so. Thank you very much for being here tonight. And thank you, school committee and Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, moving on. Okay, so we'll go back to your superintendent's report.
Uh, yeah, okay, Jody can go after.
Yeah. So this next piece is sort of a so what, now what of all of what we just saw. And I'm going to try to run through this. I know it's getting late. Just waiting for the option to come available here so I can, here we go. Uh, hang on. Okay. So in front of you this evening are my draft goals for the 25, 26 school year. This really, and thank you for taking that out of order because this really is a response to what we just saw. So we wanted to make sure that we had all the data upfront before we delve into the actual goals. And like I said, I'll try to run through these fairly quickly. But we're starting with this premise of our job is to help support our students to be the best version of themselves. And so in the absence of this kind of portrait of a learner, this kind of new direction forward, what you have in front of you is really a summary point of how we're approaching the work this year. I have one year to kind of get this right. So I really want to capture the information correctly that I've seen, heard and how we're doing this work, approaching this work. And this will be a good launch pad for focused schools, if we're able to move in that direction, to help really capture kind of where we're going next. But the whole kind of premise of what we're going to see is how do we take the data that Dr. Scars, I just went through, Scazza just went through, the information that our principals were here to kind of speak to and answer, and then really leverage the work we're doing to systematize. Mayor, to your point, like how do we address these issues now so that they don't continue to repeat? So the focus of our work is around what we teach, how we teach minimizing barriers to academic growth, but also that social emotional behavioral growth. And we know what happens when adults get really focused on a few things and wrap our talents, times and effort around our students, they do better. It doesn't matter if it's on a field, on a court, if it's a marching band, if it's at home in your own house. Kids do better when the adults are in sync. And so the idea here is to get the adults all on the same page. Dr. Skazza mentioned, you know, that, that idea of kind of feedback and providing the right feedback. We use the Brene Brown, clear as kind all the time, right? We want to be clear, direct and supportive in the work that we're doing to help service kids. And so this is kind of the mantra this year that we're using to help propel our work forward. So specifically, what does that mean? One of the things that Michelle and I talked a little bit about is this idea of evaluation focus standards. The superintendent evaluation process, like all of the administrators and the educators for that matter, is like wicked cumbersome. And there's tons of indicators and there's a lot of things we can do. Our idea is to not do a bunch of things sort of okay, but to do fewer things really well. And so we identified some focus standards to which the school committee can and should hold me accountable as far as my performance in these areas. If this is the direction that you choose to go around instructional leadership, operations and our management, our community engagement work and our professional culture. So we identified these focus indicators that link directly to the goals themselves. So as we're walking through, we can delve into each of those. And I'm not going to read the slides to you, but I do just want to mention a couple of things on our student learning goal. This looks really simple on the surface, but what you're going to see on slides five and seven is actually like how we're going to do this. Because this is just the, the, the student achievement goal that we have had in Marlboro for quite some time. And so we are going to stick with this goal for now, you know, given a variety of circumstances. But really, we're going to get into the weeds of how we're going to do this in the subsequent slides. But one of the things that I do want to highlight here is that the school committee will be hearing from some of our instructional leadership teams across our schools. And we'll be looking at our student performance, performance results on our N W E A, that interim assessment throughout the school year. So that you're not waiting and hearing once a year how we're doing. You're going to get these updates as we go. So the student learning goal is really broken down into two different categories, right? Again, it's like the what we teach and the how we teach, that curriculum and that instructional piece. And again, there's just, there's three main focal points here for curriculum. And I'm just going to quickly highlight them. The first is the implementation of our, of our new math program. You heard a little bit tonight about our elementary math results. We have work to do. Our teachers know that, our principals know that, and they're doing it. Our, our Office of Teaching and Learning has really coalesced around this work. And as you know, the school committee, through their approval process, we brought our supervisors down. They're now K to 12, right? They're just not working at the secondary level. So they're in our elementary schools doing this work, which is great. So we have a focus there. We have another focus on our E L A and E L L educators coming together. We heard a little bit about this already at our middle school and really looking at that co-teach model. One of the things we've been spending some time really talking about is we have these intervention materials, but we're not using the core materials right yet. So we need to start replacing these intervention materials with our core materials, right? The kids aren't going to make progress if we're, if you're reading at a third grade level and you should be reading at a fifth grade level. If you're constantly giving kids third grade reading level material, they're never going to get to fifth grade. We have to give them fifth grade material, but then give them the supports to be able to access that. So it sounds like sort of a subtle shift, but it's actually pretty important. We saw that with our E L L students with our level ones and twos. I'm glad, Michelle, you mentioned this earlier. This is really important. Our E L L students are getting stuck at level three and four because we never expose them to the English language and content level, particularly as it relates to E L A as level ones and twos. We give them a separate program. So we didn't expose them to grade six, seven or eight text at that level and help them access it through a variety of sheltered English immersion strategies. Instead, we took those materials out of their hands and gave them different materials, right? So they're losing out when that happens. So we've made that, that significant shift at the middle school and we're going to see that happening across the other grade spans. And then the last piece is to develop, and RJ and Chris Henry and I And then the last piece is to develop, and RJ and Chris, Henry and I spent a lot of time talking about this and very thankful Chris is here tonight and can speak to this if you have any questions, but this idea of we really need to do a thorough review of our curriculum, review, renewal, and kind of curriculum storage, if you will, a housing kind of process. We need to have a cycle in place where we are constantly reviewing in a very systemic way our curriculum in our assessment process. And so we are looking to do that this year. And so those are kind of the three main buckets of the curricular work that we're going to be doing. On the instructional side of the house, you have heard a lot about our roadmap work, and we are continuing that work. So there is going to be, and has already been, but a lot of support put in place as it relates to our instructional roadmap and aligning all of our learning walks, our professional development, and the work in our professional learning communities. So that's when the teachers get together to talk about student performance around those roadmap strategies and progress monitoring very tightly how the kids are doing on a weekly basis, not just, you know, once a quarter or once, you know, between the beginning, middle, and end of year. Our instructional leadership teams will be deeply involved in those data cycles. That's what I was just referring to. And we'll be looking at who are the kids, what are the skills, and how do we know they're getting it? What do we do when they've got it? And what do we do when they don't? And cycling kids through that process on a regular basis. So when you think about the work, that tier one is that typical, your general classroom instruction, we're strengthening that work. Your two and tier three work happens with your interventionists, sometimes inside the classroom, sometimes outside of the classroom. It depends upon what the issues are. We're seeing a lot of the instruction now happening through different station-based models that the teachers are using in their classroom where they're really leveraging that second adult to keep kids in either a review station where they're reviewing current skills or old skills, a reinforcement station where maybe they're with the classroom teacher for a couple of rounds because they just haven't figured out how to add fractions with different denominators, right? Or an enrichment station where they're really being pushed to challenge and grow. So how does all of this come together? Through our staff development, right? So this is kind of the other piece. I don't know why it's not coming up there. I'm like a slide ahead. Oh. I don't know what's going on. Hang on, sorry. Oops. Bear with me one second. My thing just kicked me off here. Get this queued up. I referenced earlier around the student learning goal that we'd be looking at the curriculum, the instruction, but then also specifically what are the actual skills that we need to build as far as capacity in our adults to get these pieces to happen? And so that is where the staff development and support comes in. One of the things we talked a lot about with the Office of Teaching and Learning is all of our professional development needs to be anchored in our roadmap strategies. If these are the strategies we're saying are going to help get us the most leverage as far as improving student outcomes, then that's the work that we need to be doing. And it cannot just be with our teachers. Sometimes adults really like the idea of change when they think you're talking about everybody else. And then you're like, oh, I have to do that too, right? So I say that in just because this change is going to impact all of us. Every single one of us needs to lead different, needs to support our educators different. The buck does not just stop with the teacher in the classroom. And sometimes they can be on that end of the, of the continuum, and that isn't fair. We have really good educators that are working really hard. I believe in our teachers here immensely. I believe in our leadership team immensely, but every single one of us has to, has to lead different. And so we called it out. It's not just the educators, but it's the central office administrators, it's the directors, the supervisors, the principals, et cetera. We have used the mantra, if you are doing everything you've always done on October 14th, the way you've done it, then you're going to get the same results we're getting, and that's a problem. We know because we just saw them, right? So we can't do the same thing and think we're going to get different results just because we hope we get better results. We have to do the work different. And that goes for the leadership as well. So at the bottom of slide seven, you will see the ways that I am asking the school committee to hold me accountable for this. This is how I'm going to show you, and we as a team will show you that this work is happening. So you'll see some of the measurements folded below.
Sorry. Is it, is it possible when you're doing your P D courses and such, that, you know, like how on the strategic plan we'll have like, I don't know, you know, one A ties into here on this goal, right? And there's a tie-in. Is it possible with like the P D courses that you guys are offering, that there's a way of tying it into like the roadmap, you know, wherever it's going to hit so that people can really get it? Like, I need to do this P D, not just because I need to get my P D credits, but I need to get my P D credits in this area to help me be better on here on my roadmap.
The P D offerings, and I don't know if you want to speak to this, Dr. Scars, but have to be connected to the roadmap.
We're getting there is the answer. So we have categorized all of the P D offerings to a roadmap topic, which is a good start, meaning when we're screening proposals for P D, if they are all now related to a roadmap topic, which is good. It's just a matter of getting to the point that you highlight, Mrs. Hennessy, of where the P D requirement lies on behalf of the educator to ensure that that individual is going, oh, I need, I need the professional development in this area, and they're just not choosing loosely with, with, with a course offering. So as a P D committee, we're trying to develop a system that's a little bit more tightened up around the, if you have not yet received P D in this area, then you are going to be partaking.
And that's your choice, right? Like, I guess that that's what I'm saying is if we can see because of the walkthroughs, the identifiers, that it probably would be helpful if you went ahead and took this, you know, but it has to kind of be categorized, right? So that person goes, yep, I got it. You know, we need to do that if we have that expectation.
Thank you.
So just you and I had spoken about like a request I had in, in our, you know, as I've mentioned to you earlier, I sometimes struggle with knowing that an expectation of a school committee is to help to improve student achievement, but getting from point A to point B is hard because we're not educators, right? And this presentation tonight has helped immensely, I feel, in helping to drill down to what really needs to happen in order for student achievement to, to get better. And so my ask for you is even on our agendas, if when we're getting presentations or when you're talking about the data or whatever, helping us to see where it connects to the work that we talked about tonight and to the goals in particular. So if you're giving a presentation on X, you can say, okay, this is in support of goal number two, and this is why we're doing it. Just to help tie that all back in for us.
And to that exact point, even during the evaluation process, so the middle of year and end of year are set up, this will be hyperlinked with the evidence, and I will link the standard right to it. So you can see which focus standard is connected to which piece of exactly what you're saying.
Okay. And just to clarify, so for, for us, that really long, cumbersome evaluation tool that we have to do every year that everyone loves so much, what he's suggesting, which I didn't know you could do, is only picking a couple of indicators in each category and focusing on them. So we're not feeling like we're having to come up with an evaluation on things that maybe we don't see in the course of our dealings, right? And so I think the whole evaluation process is going to be a lot more relevant for all of us and, and a lot easier to do. Thank you. Carry on.
Next, we have a goal around, so shifting gears, staff and student safety. And so we are working with a cross-department group that includes individuals from our police, fire, the mayor's office, D P W, to create sort of the first of its kind interdepartment safety team. We are, we are looking at strengthening both the hardware and the humanware of our school system to ensure that we are ready for anything that may come our way. So lots of good work happening in this space and very grateful for our partnership with the other city departments. They've been tremendous, tremendously helpful. You heard this evening a little bit about our next district goal, which is the creation of a new strategic plan. And so this is pretty straightforward. By the end of this year, we will have a new strategic plan in portrait of a learner. That's an easy one to measure. But very excited about this work because again, we're going to not only take into account all of the information we saw already this evening, but really lean into and listen to our families, our local businesses, our nonprofits, our municipal side, you know, what do they need in our graduates? What are the skills they're looking for? What are the strengths they're seeing? What are the opportunities? And so I'm really excited to get this piece moving and get the strategic plan in place by the end of this academic year. And then lastly, the final goal is around the richer school and the M S B A process. Pending an affirmative city vote, we certainly don't know, but pending that, if that is an affirmative vote, by June, we should be in our design development work, and that should be well underway. And I did partner with our own as project manager and our architect on this to ensure that we, we will meet our milestones.
Correct.
We will absolutely meet our milestones.
That's the goal.
That's the goal. So if all goes as planned, we should be here by the end of the year.
Spent a lot of meetings about the school.
Yes. So that is the final goal for my draft goals.
Okay. Questions? Saying that, move on. Last update.
And then my last item for my report, super awesome. Our middle school kids are on their trip to Japan. I was able to see them off last week with a lovely breakfast. I heard their speeches all in Japanese. They were amazing. Like, the kids were absolutely amazing. They should be home this weekend. It's so funny because the time change, they leave, I think Friday at like 10:25, and they get home Friday at 10:35. So they're on the flight for 10 minutes. Because that plane's after them. The kids were like dying laughing when they figured that out. Seven minute flight from Japan. And then they're, they will be joining us in early November. We've made our reservations for dinner. I went to Wellie's and took care of that, which will be great. And then we are ordering their, just their gifts for them with us. We have something, a token of gratitude to give them when they arrive. So very excited to hear. We'll have the kids here and the staff here when they get back at some point to share about their trip. It was my report.
Anything else? All righty. We'll move on to the Office of Student Services and Equity, Special Education Data Programming and Learner Support.
Thank you very much. Say, I want to provide some information on the special education student assessment and accountability data. I do not have specific data. I will provide that in a future report. I think maybe might be all dated out to me. But recent M C A S data assessment, M C A S assessment data for reading and E L A and math indicates that performance for students with disabilities in our district is currently below the state target. While this is an area of concern, it also presents an opportunity to deepen our commitment to equity and accelerate progress for our students with special needs. For our next steps, we're doing a root cause analysis and strategic planning. To address these results, I along with Director Chris Henry will be attending the D E S I regional convening, which day one was today and day two is tomorrow, where a root cause analysis of our district's data will be conducted to identify systemic barriers and address and areas, sorry, systemic barriers and areas for improvement. Follow-up action plans are expected to be developed and submitted to D E S I. And today is part of that, there's an online portal that we both provided access to, which takes us to a success gap toolkit where we're able to put in our data and identify the areas that we need to work on, which for us is our M C A S performance for E L A, reading and math for across all grade levels. But also we identified our, our graduation and dropout rate for, for special education students at the high school level as well as our, what's called the least restrictive environment for special education students. We are below the state percent average for students who are in full inclusion classrooms. So we, as part of this project, will be looking at how does that impact our student performance? So basically, we have more special education students who are having more time pulled out of general education, receiving their services in resource room classes with special education teachers than on the state average. And that's not like our program, you know, our specialized programs. We're talking about, you know, students who are doing pullout for E L A, E L A and math. And part of my philosophy, and it was brought up today, is that the amount of, that the amount of time that special education students are out of the general class, receiving pullout services, that special education instruction is supposed to be a supplement, it's not a replacement for general education. So that's something that we need to look at. So we're already ahead of the curve. We have initiated several key steps prior to receiving the assessment results. Our district is actively developing a comprehensive action plan focused on instructional shifts and program enhancements. We're going to be implementing data, a data cycle plan of beginning, beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year progress monitoring. We'll be developing a professional development program based on that, the work that we're doing with D E S I, and then evaluation of key indicators. In addition to academic performance, we're also addressing challenges faced by students with disabilities related to chronic absenteeism, high school graduation rates, and dropout rates. These factors significantly impact long-term student outcomes and require targeted interventions. Our district is committed to implementing strategies that promote consistent attendance, support students through, through to graduation, and reduce dropout rates among our special education populations. Throughout the year, I'll provide updates and specific data on students with disabilities' achievement and growth, as well as their attendance and graduation rates.
Okay. Ms. Hennessy.
Question on that. I feel like it's been our approach to special education to try and keep as many of our students here in Marlboro than having them go out for services, which I think has been a benefit. That's one of the things that Marlboro's done, I think, really well around special education. So I ask in comparison to other districts, are we being compared fairly against other districts? And are they keeping their students in their districts? Or are they putting them out to other places to have to educate them? I guess that that's where I'm, I'm wondering a little bit about some of this information because I feel like we've done a really good job of trying to make sure that people, the kids are staying here.
So it isn't, this is, it's not about the percentage of students that are in substantially separate programs, which is, so we have, there's three categories for placements. There's full inclusion, which is students who are pulled out, who participate, participate eighty percent or more of their time is within general education, and that twenty, less than twenty percent of their time is pulled out. That's considered full inclusion. Then partial inclusion is between that twenty to sixty percent of their time is in a, is a pullout, is in a pullout model. What's considered to be substantially separate is any students that receive sixty percent or more of their time in a special education setting. Those aren't the students that we're being penalized against or as far as points. It is the number of students that we, that we have, that are getting twenty to, the twenty to sixty percent of their the 20 to 60% of their time is with a special education teacher where in a lot of other districts, they're in that full inclusion. So we have too many kids in partial inclusion versus full inclusion compared to other districts. So that's where the work is that we need to do a deeper dive on how many students that is. Why, you know, is it particular subject areas? Is it ELA versus math? Is it particular grade levels? And so that's the deep dive that we need to do in the data to look at the root cause. And how does that impact our performance within, you know, MCAS, but also our NWA data?
Gotcha.
And so ultimately, a model similar to what we're doing with EL and doing team teaching might make sense. That would keep them in the classroom, but still get the supports they needed.
That, that may be one option. I'm, I'm sure that there's probably many factors as to why students are performing the way they are. So chronic absenteeism could be another. So I'm sure that will have a multiple action, step action plan.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Acceptance of minutes. Minutes of the school committee meeting September 18th, 2025.
Motion to approve the minutes from September 18th, 2025.
Motion is on the table and seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the school committee meeting September 18th minutes? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Minutes of the school committee meeting September 30th, 2022.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 30th, 2025.
Thank you. Motion's on the table and seconded. Any questions, comments or concerns regarding the meeting minutes from September 30th? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment? Public comments. Thor, just want to state your name and your comment.
Even address.
Hi, my name is Thor. I live at 5 McCabe Drive.
Thor, can I have your full name, please?
Oh, Thor Smith.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to, to comment that I thought there was some good points about the, the, the different students and, and the, the changing bodies throughout the year. And I, I was wondering if it would, if it could be interesting to look at the, the information following a particular class to see if there is improvement for that class as they progress through grade levels. And I also wanted to comment that I thought there was good information from the, the Choose Marlboro information that, that the students shared. Particularly the, the, the one about students being in the, the college prep and the honor students being in the same class. And the, the, them not necessarily being able, them taking a middle ground in, in terms of achievement with respect to that. And I guess I'm, I'm curious to know if that applies to other areas of the school as well. I'm interested to know like how, how much it affects, but if it, if it applies to, to other areas of the school as well where potentially that might be happening.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Public comments. For the second time. Seeing none. Public comments. Last and final chance. Public comment for the third time. Seeing none, we will close the public comment section. Thank you. Action items and reports for policy.
Thank you. So tonight you have before you a number of different policies that we've been working on. Let's see. IH, the Internet Acceptable Use Policy, IHB, Social Media Policy, ILB, Graduation Requirements Policy, ILB-A, the Wellness Alternate Pathway Policy, and ILD, which is the CTE Policy. The CTE Policy, just to make sure you all are aware, is something that we needed to get underway to meet with a DESI requirement that they had asked to get this on the books quickly. So we are trying to move forward on obviously responding appropriately. And it's something that we were already really doing. It was just kind of formalizing it into a policy. So this is on deck for a first read. Should you have any questions or concerns, issues, please feel free to reach out unless you have something here tonight that you'd like to address.
Any questions regarding your first read? Seeing none. We will move on. Thank you. Strategic Plan in Portrait of a Learner Proposal Focused Schools. So we had a lot of information with the presentation, so we just need to vote. We want to move forward with the focused schools for our Portrait of a Learner proposal.
Move to accept the proposal from Focus Schools.
Motion on the table and seconded to move forward with focused schools for our strategic plan in Portrait of a Learner proposal. So any questions, Ms. Hennessy?
The question slash comment is I just really want to understand around that budget. As I brought up during the earlier conversation with Carrie, I, I understand that it's 21 days. I would love if she can really tease that out for you, which in the end is going to be for us to really understand much more about making sure that we understand and have a set round of expectations about what we're receiving within that at different benchmarks along the way, if possible.
I'm happy to have her break that out for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Jason, a question slash. Question slash comment. It's encouraging that you've got experience with focused schools previously. I assume anything that they bring back from clients as learnings post-project, so things that would been done differently or looking back how they might have recalibrated a project, that we would benefit from those learnings going into whatever the, the phase plan looks like. So I'm, I'm assuming that's part of what we're going to get from them.
Most definitely, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Motion on the table and seconded. Can we do this real roll call just so we're all clear? Mr. Gary, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. It is approved. Okay. Moving on. Reports of school committee subcommittee meeting. Anyone?
Policy-wise, we are continuing to work on a few specifics. You'll note with the graduation requirement policy being on, we are also pulling out the competency. Why do I do that? CD, the CD.
Determination.
Thank you.
Determination.
Sorry. Brains a little fried at this point, but that's being pulled out. So you will see that coming fairly quickly. We just had a little bit more that we needed to put in place specifically around ELA and special education notices and that. But we're just continuing to move forward. You'll hear more from us soon. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Reports of school committee subcommittee. Seeing none. Members forum.
Yes.
I've reviewed the warrant and will sign appropriately. Everyone's okay.
Yes. Last week I mentioned, or last meeting, we mentioned that this past week was Spirit Week at Marlboro High School.
For what?
We did, the seniors won. So I'll get there. Throughout the whole week, we did like five, five different themed days. And there were best dressed winners for each. If you look at the MHS Panther Spirit Instagram, you'll see the rankings. You all see the point updates. And I was going to say thank you to Ms. Klein for doing all the hard work of calculating the points and all that. But there was also canned food drive. A lot of food was donated as well as penny wars, which all the money gets donated to Special Olympics and Student Council. And it was an awesome turnout event. And especially in the last day, the spirit rally, seniors came out on top. But it's just a great way to see how MHS spirit really is, especially for students looking to come. It's a great experience and those are the moments you'll really remember it. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And congrats on winning.
Yeah.
Was Spirit Week better or worse than the robotics team win?
Can't compare.
Don't have to answer.
Apples and oranges.
Anything else for members forum?
Just want to
Welcome.
Welcome our new member.
The usually, meetings aren't usually this long, so I don't know.
This was quite a meeting to have your beer first.
Lot of, lot of good content, though.
I thank all the presenters, the contributors, enormous visibility and transparency. Appreciate that and look forward to working with you and the Chrisco community.
Excellent. All right.
Thanks.
On that note.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourns on the table and seconded, all in favor of adjourned. We are adjourned at 9:54. Thank you all, everyone. Have a great night.